Welcome everybody to the town of Ryenbeck zoning board appeals meeting for February 21st, 2024. You don't have a copy of the minutes from January, so we'll defer that to the next meeting. And before we get into the all the applications and everything else, I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge somebody who's no longer with us unfortunately. Yesterday I found out that a person named David Balador, probably nobody knows here, passed away. And David was chair of the ZBA when I got on board in 2003. David served on the planning board of appeals. He served on the comprehensive committee that I redid the zoning in 2009. And he was chair of the zoning board for at least 10 years. And one day I was shocked when he said he wasn't doing it anymore and I asked him why? He goes, because I'm 85. And David's the kind of guy who you never knew he was 85. He skied, he did this, that, the other thing. As a rightful act, he's a retired IBM engineer. And he's a kind of public servant that, you know, there's very few of them. He served this town for decades and was just a gentleman. Rarely lost his temper, was calm, and was just a great friend and a great man. And the world is a little lesser place because of his passing yesterday. But I just wanted to acknowledge David, a great guy, a great man. And he will absolutely be missed by a lot of folks, including me. So anyway, just want to throw that out there. Okay. But life goes on and we have to get into the applications. So we have one new application and that is firm clip. Is everybody here for a clip? Aha. So have you been here before and know our process and all that kind of stuff? Basically, what we want you to do. Yeah. It's, I know it's not a very complex matter, but if you could just let us know what you want to do. Kim will help with putting up the photographs and other things. And Steve is over there, you're on camera, so just explain to the audience.
Certainly, I'm happy to do that.
Great.
We've been working with.
And your name and.
Oh, sorry, my name is Paul Biker, owner, president of Timeless Eyes in Kingston. We are working with Arch Care and representing them tonight. They have been a client of ours since 2000, I think. This is the second time we have worked on a signage project. This latest one is predicated by a rebrand of the Arch Care, the Arch Diocese of New York design standards. And so that's what kind of prompted the replacement of the signage. Previous ones that we had done had, were done at necessity. This particular one is a rebrand, although, you know, the existing signs had, were past their useful lifespan, so. The existing sign that we're proposing for this site is, as I understand, beyond what is allowed in this particular zone. I think that it is the exact same dimensions of the previous sign. However, still requiring a variance. I think it's important, you know, Arch Care serves an important need in the community. They, on this road where the bend is and the setback requirement of the sign makes for a very small, very little visibility. And so, you know, having a sign that is large enough so that people recognize the turnoff is important. The dimensions are essentially the same, 43.3 to the existing sign. This is, happens to be more of a maintenance-free aluminum product. I think it's less prominent than the white sign. Perfectly, to be perfectly honest with you, it's less, it doesn't stand out as much. But we have felt and studies have shown that a dark field with white text is more visible to motorists, pedestrians, et cetera. So it happens to be the standard that Arch Care has developed and it is consistent with everything they have to have in New York in terms of their signage plan. I don't think it's a significant amount of square footage to request a variance for. I know this is a largely residential area. However, like, I don't think it makes a negative impact simply because that's a particular sign where the road terminates in a two intersection. It's really not visible from anyone's personal residence, you know. I don't think it's a significant, creates a significant detriment to the neighborhood for that particular site. Any questions?
Yeah, it is, it's the same size as the.
As the current one that is.
The current.
Yeah, that is.
And I've been here so long, I remember giving variants on the last one. And my dealings are well-known about the law and the size of signs and that kind of stuff and its adequacy. So anyway.
Scott, since the sign is the exact same dimension, is there a precedent?
No, well, when you change anything, even because it's out of code, even though there was variance given for the same size sign, and again, I was here for that, it's got to be 10 years ago, 15 years ago.
Yeah, 15.
Long time, yeah, 15. If you're going to change it, you've got to give a variance.
I did check just to make sure that just replacing a sign in time.
Yeah.
If it triggered a variance, but there was nothing that, there was no exceptions in the zoning law about it. So because, as Scott said, it is still on, it's still a variance.
I didn't write the law.
No, that's interesting. Is it, is it higher than the sign, existing sign?
No, it's the same, same height.
Really, the other one stands 72.
I think the other one has some ball finials on them that maybe a little higher.
I think that was.
And even with the little cut out, a little bump on the top. But then on the other sign is more strictly rectangular, but still the same.
Well, I believe the way that the town of Ryenbeck.
It's based on.
Basic, well, no, it really measures the outside perimeter of the sign. The fact that there's a shaped top isn't really. I think the Village of Ryenbeck is the only one that allows you to do a complex shape in the full area. So we can get the square footage of an oval or a circle, which is less than doing a square.
And it's going in the same place?
Yeah, direct replacement, same place.
I did write the law.
Yeah. So is there a way to expedite this in a way that.
Uh, no, but we go through the process and it's, you know, just one of those things that has to be done. And this was not going to be hard, but it has to be done. So does anybody have any questions or concerns about the application? I mean, to me, it's, you know, we believe it's a very simple application. I don't consider it the last time around, so. Any other.
Yeah, is there no type on this sign or the other? Because that's smaller type.
Yeah, no one can read that in the car, I don't think.
I agree with you 100%. Again, these, these design guidelines come down from Arch Diocese of New York. I, personally, I think it's a very much a secondary or tertiary type, to be honest with you. The fact that all I wanted, the, the only reason it's there is to, you know, for brand consistency. It's really important that people just see Arch Care.
Okay. Well, I think that we have enough to consider the application, so I'd make a motion to accept the application. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and because our secretary, he's not here, I don't know when the next meeting is, but I'll put down shortly.
I think it's.
Because my phone knows all. It is March 20th.
Because I'm leaving on March 21st, but I made sure to be available this day.
Very, very comfortable. Can you be here on the 20th?
Of course.
Okay. So, you know, the, we'll advertise this, we'll, you'll advertise this, we'll go through the process with Gretchen.
Sure.
And the neighbors will be advised about what's going on, we'll do the same thing, public hearing and all that stuff.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, Gretchen. Okay, we have a little housekeeping to do. And that is identifying this under secret, which our council recommends, and I believe it's correct, that it be a type 2 action under 617.522, installation of traffic control devices on existing streets, roads, and highways, which include signs. Do I have a second for that designation? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then there's referrals, the planning board, obviously, Ryenbeck Planning Board, Dutch County Planning, because it's within five, Dutch County Planning Board, because it's within 500 feet of a country road, that's where the road, County 103, and then the WAC?
Yes, it's within, it's within the WRD.
Really? Okay. All right, so we'll make those three referrals and I'm sure Gretchen will take care of that. I will take this one because it's easy and I was here the last time around, so I'll take that. Anything else, Kim?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. So that does it for our new applications. And so we're going to get on to our public hearings. And the first application is Jody Need. Is there somebody here for that?
Hi.
How are you doing?
Good. Come on up and I think you know the.
I know the.
The drill. So state your name and we're going to go through it. Is there anybody here for the the need matter? Other than you guys?
All right, so good evening, everybody. Mike DeTerry, Lance Surveyor, Ulster County, DeTerry Lance Surveyor, P L L C. I am representing Jody Need with a front yard offset variance regarding 23 Liston Drive. A little history, Jody is lot number 13 and filed max 7600, which is the Stone Church subdivision, 1986. In 1986, the front yard setback for this particular zone was 100 feet, or was not 100 feet. It is currently 100 feet. Jody's, as you can see on the map, that mapping here, I will actually be happy to hold it up for you too. A quick run-through is that, you know, most of Jody's.
Current.
Yeah, her entire home.
Yeah, I would give a copy of this, correct?
Yeah, sure, okay. So most of what is on Jody's property, including her main home, is encroaching on the front yard setback. Obviously, once again, based upon the fact that this is a 1986 subdivision and Jody's home is, if not the first home built in the subdivision, one of the very first, as it is directly off the main entrance to the subdivision. Jody is proposing a pool, a pool house, and a patio, all which fall in the now 100-foot zoning, front yard zoning offset. I'm not going to go through all the dimensions again as I did that last month.
It might be helpful if you use the pointer and just, just for the audience out in TV land and wherever else.
Yeah, I want to work this for it and see the.
Yeah.
How about my finger for a minute? Is that okay? I can give you a little, a little pointing here.
Sure.
If that helps. So basically, items regarding the variance and the footage that is required are as follows. The shed itself, the pool shed itself, will be 53.4 on the northeast corner, 56.6 on the southeast corner. So we're obviously requiring the variance. This blue line here being the current zoning line, this purple shape here being the actual current home site. So you can see, most likely, in the late 80s, early 90s, the zoning was out here. It was then redone, the zoning is now back here for 100-foot offset. So obviously, everything that was predated and pre-existing doesn't meet the zoning. So in order to install a pool, pool shed, and patio, we're really not able to meet the current zoning based upon the fact that we would have a pool and a pool shed and patio that is, you know, 85, 100 feet away from the house. We are trying to keep it here in a, the least, you know, troublesome spot as possible. You know, trying to keep everything located within each other. We're proposing a couple of fences, which are shown on the drawings we submitted. An 18 by 36 pool with an 18 by 12 pool house, which will have a patio, which is obviously not going to be too cumbersome either. So we're here tonight, you know, looking for a preliminary approval regarding our dimensional proposed dimensions. And in the meantime, we have provided some.
Yeah, some drawings, some renderings.
Yeah.
Nice, thank you very much.
And they were prepared by our.
Okay, maybe you could take us through those, because those, those, thank you very much, by the way, for the renderings. They're very helpful, not only to us, but also to the public to see what's going on here.
Yeah, so this is actually a really good one here. You know, you can see the pool. I'm going to step over to this side so everybody can see how we point with this. Pool, pool patio, pool house, existing deck, existing home, this being the garage. The steps coming off the deck right here with a sidewalk to the pool. If you want to scroll through to the next one, I feel like this is, you know, like I had mentioned last night, I really would like everybody to, obviously, we're more than happy to do a layout and show everybody. But driving by really proves our point in terms of the fact that there's very little disturbance to the actual neighborhood with regards to the location. It's almost in a spot where it's really not even totally visible. We're going to see the fence, the new fence that is going to come from the corner of the garage down. You will see that. We discovered last, in December, that that fence actually meets the zoning. So we're really not even asking for a variance regarding that particular fence. Basically, our variance is for the pool, pool patio, pool house. Moving forward, this is the current conditions. You can see our, our back patio, which I just spoke of recently, two pictures ago. This is the fence there that will be removed. The pool and pool shed will be right there. Moving on to the next slide, again, what the fences will look like. This is behind the house. You will not see this in any way, shape, or form driving by this particular fence here. Continuing moving forward, this is the spot. So here's the main Winston Drive here. Again, we're 23 Winston. As you come by here, this will be the pool area directly in here and pool shed will be right here. Again, the fence will be traveling along.
Go back one if you want.
Yeah, yeah, so this is a good one here. You will get an idea of what it's going to look like here. You will see that the fence, the pool shed, the pool, obviously, some grass area and patio. This is the current existing conditions. That's actually a picture I took, I believe. Again, this is a good one here. You're driving in Winston Drive, you come off Stone Church Road there, you pull into Winston, you take a right. Jody's house is right there. As you hit the intersection, you're heading right, you're heading around Winston Drive. This is our proposed fence. That will be basically what you see. You can see the roof line of the pool shed, but otherwise, you're not going to see much beyond that. And once again, we discovered in December that that fence actually meets all zoning criteria. So again, we're not even asking for a variance for that fence. It's the pool location and the patio pool shed.
It's a five-foot fence.
The, yes, the pool, the fence out front, I think we discovered, did we not discover that we could have a six-foot out there also?
You can have a six-foot.
Yeah.
But.
The front, the front fence as currently proposed is five-foot.
Okay.
Okay. Next.
By the way, is it staked out?
It's not, but I'd be happy to do it for you whenever you're ready.
We're going to need to do that. We typically do site inspections after the public hearing, just in case the public.
Yeah, that's, that's the simple part for me.
Yeah, we get, we like to get the feedback from the planning board so we know what concerns and many are.
Absolutely, absolutely, no problem, that's no problem.
Yeah, that's no problem.
And with regards to the stakeout, not to get off topic, but I mean, so we're going to stay, we're going to give you the, everything that we're asking a variance for, pool, patio, the fence, I can give you the fence also.
The fence would be nice, just the outlines of the fence, the outlines of the pool and where the shed, pool shed.
Absolutely, no problem. Next slide, do we have anything after that? I think we basically went through them all. This is probably one of the more realistic visualizations. You can see, so you come into the driveway here, garage, corner of the garage, the five-foot fence, the pool house within the fencing. Again, this is a current, this is the current view. Again, you're, you're at like eye height here in a car, so you're going to see the fence and maybe a slight portion of the roof of the pool house. But other than that, you're not going to see much of anything that's beyond that. Existing picture, those fences are going to be removed. And that, that's probably our, our main visualization right there. Inside of the pool, you know, inside of the fence, you're going to have the fence there, pool, the pool house is open. Pool, patio.
The colors that are set forth, those are going to be the colors of, say, for example, the pool shed?
Yes.
Okay. And, and I'm just reading from some of the concerns that the planning board had. Shed height?
I have that, the shed height was on, you have those.
Yeah, I submitted that to Gretchen a while ago.
Okay.
It's got the.
And I think actually, they were, it was, there was a slide of that in December.
Is there, okay.
And it was, it was something that you had asked to have colorized, which is now we're showing as white.
But it was a black and white sketch of it.
That's the.
Yeah, well, the covers are good because obviously we have to, that's one of the considerations, whether it's with the neighborhood. Again, the, the planning board in their review was not sure about the shed height, so that's why I just asked.
I'll see you here.
Yeah, okay, that's no problem. Gretchen definitely does have that and unfortunately, it's, it's in my truck.
Well, no, that's right.
Um, I didn't think that, I thought, I honestly thought that we had it digitally on here tonight. But again, you can kind of get the idea of what we're going for here with the patio and the fence and the pool.
The, the pool shed itself, bathroom, anything like that there, you already know, just, just to go and change kind of thing.
Yeah, and storage, correct.
The kitchen or any of that kind of stuff, we got to ask.
No.
See, I know the last time we, you'd mentioned that there were, these were like the two fence colors. Did you decide on which fence color you were thinking about?
Yeah, it'd be more towards the bottom.
Yeah. So this here, I believe, is more of a weathered type, something that maybe was just polyurethane versus, you know, stained and painted. Again, yeah, I feel, this is going to be more of our, our final product.
And as far as arranging a site visit, who do we contact to do that?
I think we can all get looped into an email, Jody and I. I mean, Jody can send an email to Gretchen, including myself in it. Gretchen can loop you guys in and whatever works for you, I'm willing to work with.
Weekends, at least for me, work better.
Whatever it takes, we're willing to do whatever we have to do that.
We typically try to do it on a weekend if we can, whatever works for you guys.
Scott, are you thinking a group site visit or?
It can be, yeah.
Give me an email, I'm happy, because I, with my personnel, I'm happy to do it solo, just to expedite things.
No, we should have probably a couple of people out there, so we don't have to have everybody, but maybe, you know, two or three people.
It would, it would probably be good if I was there also for a more technical explanation versus, you know, forcing Jody to try and give you guys a field explanation, so.
Okay, because losing the stakeout, you have an idea of where the lane is on the land.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to show you guys around though.
Okay.
So that, that's basically the gist of it. Again, at this point, I generally ask the public for comments, but I don't believe anybody's here to review this project, so we're going to let you guys.
One last time, anybody want to?
Yes, Scott, if you want to just make a motion to open the public hearing?
Oh, okay, make a motion to open the public hearing, do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anybody here for that? No?
No, but I'll say something.
You can, if you like, come on up. If you want to say something, if you could just come up and state your name and camera's right there. You can ask the question of the applicant.
Uh, no, I'm a real person and I was there when I was listed and this seems like a really nice addition to the backyard.
Okay, I'll get your name.
Rachel Heimerdahl.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Sure, come on up. Again, just state your name and if you have any questions, concerns, or opinions, let us know.
My name's Jason Stasio. I actually live here, across the street.
Okay, what's your address?
Two Winston Drive.
Okay.
I am actually the first one on this spec house for that. I mean, I've phoned in Jody a couple of times. They keep a great, you know, they really look out for the way the neighborhood looks and they make their home and stuff. So I actually think it's been great. I'm kind of a little embarrassed that they have to go through all this because I know where the house is, you know, and I know the back of the property, but no, it's going to be pretty.
There's this law that.
I'm scared.
It's terrible, I'm in the turkey, you got to find this. So.
No, that, I think it's going to pass like number four.
Fantastic, thank you for your input. Anybody else? All right. Would, any questions, concerns? No? Okay. All right, with that, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, what does that mean? That means that we have 62 days to render a solution. However, we do it hugely by the next meeting, which is March 20th, if I'm not wrong correctly. So we'll have a resolution for you on the 20th. You do not have to be here. In the interim, we will do a site visit, but the resolution will be put out on the 20th. We'll read it here. If you like, if you have nothing better to do on Wednesday evening, you can come here and watch or you can just get a notification the next day.
As I just explained to Jody, I will be on the beach on March 20th. So I've been postponing my winter vacation. As a surveyor, you know, we like to vacation when it's cold. So no, I will not be able to be here. I'm sure Jody could be here, but in the meantime, I would love to get everything finalized with a field visit and a stakeout and all that stuff. I would love to meet you guys there and at least if I am there or something else you want to see that I do not have, I will be able to give it to you mathematically.
Okay. We will be in touch and probably within, maybe not this weekend, but maybe the next weekend, something like that, if that works.
Yeah. Saturdays for myself.
Saturdays.
Yeah, Sunday I chaperone the high school ski clubs, so I'm away on this, on Sunday. But Saturdays I make myself available.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So does the ZBA have any initial discussions, particularly helped with me understanding how to do the rest of it?
I mean, my initial, I haven't been to the site yet and obviously, a site visit is very important. You get the arcti, the label, and so to speak. But as it sits right now, I have no power. That's just my opinion, I'll defer to my.
And did you want to address any of the planning board's comments? One of their main comments, they didn't have a problem per se, but they did wonder if the shed could possibly be, this was the best place for the shed, they wondered if it could be a little further back, which might make it a little less visible.
Well, I think we'll find that when we do the site visit because, you know, when we're told, which I believe that, you know, this is the best place for, perhaps the only place for, we find that out pretty quickly when we go and do the site visit. So, I mean, we'll take that into consideration. That's why I like to do the site visits, after we get the input from the planning board. But, I mean, just from what the pictures that we see, it looks like it makes sense, but we'll see when we get out there.
I'm sure it makes sense and we will get the dimensions that they're looking for.
So the next public hearing is Shawna Berry. Is there someone here for that?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on up. And before I'm chastised again, I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we've seen what's happened and basically, is there anybody here for this application, Shawna Berry? All right. If you could just go through and explain to the audience and to the people in TV land, what you want to do?
I guess, okay, I'm Kevin Nelson, Shawna Berry's husband. I thought she had already presented this, but.
Well, she, she did, but the process is we have to do it.
Okay, sure. We want to put in a pool and we need a variance because it's, our house is situated right on, within 45 feet of the property line. That's how it was built in 1970, so we don't even have, so the house itself had a variance. I assume we don't, the entire land, we have five acres, but almost all of this is not usable, entirely all of it is not usable. The only real area to put a pool is here, but again, it's too close to the property line and it also needs to be a little bit in front of the house because we have a power line back here. So we need to variance because it's too close to that property line. to that property line, because it's in front of the house, I forget what the third one is.
It's a backyard setback.
Yeah, it's a fourteen by thirty pool, no poolhouse or anything.
Maybe Kevin?
The service.
Yeah, thank you, you guys did the regulations initially.
Yeah, I mean, you can see our house, I mean, this slopes downward, it's all hilly, this is all forest and hills, there's a lot of rock here, and the pool actually isn't, is barely gonna be visible from the street, if at all, it's not visible from here, because there is an upward slope period with a little hill, you won't be able to see the pool, maybe you can see it from up here when you're driving, but barely, and our neighbors are far back, there's a lot of trees here too, you can really only see their house in the winter, so really shouldn't interfere with anybody's view, I think we have some renderings too. Yeah, I see, this is the front of our house, and, I was gonna say, it goes, it's gonna have to go slightly in front of the house, and if you can see here, there's a lot of rock, and.
And the road is to the far left.
The road is back here, yeah. This is from, sort of, front of the house, the road is back here, you can kind of see, it slopes upward and, for a rock. So, the road is outward back here.
And these are pictures, these are just from, this is just probably the one section of Mill Road that it is visible in, this is off Google Earth, you can see the house, it's, that's the house.
Yeah, I mean, that's from, before we go around the front.
Yeah, I think it's like right up there.
Barely see our house, and the pool is gonna be here, so, barely, if at all, here.
Well, we'll get an idea when we do the site visit, that's why we do the site visit, is to see where the rock, the properties are, the sight lines and all that kind of stuff. Is the pool staked out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should the fence be staked out too?
Absolutely.
Sorry.
Okay. Did we, yeah, we had the, what it's gonna look like, and the fencing that you've shown, that's exactly how it feels, right?
Yeah, that color, that style.
Right. Again, anybody in the audience wanna say anything?
We did receive a comment from your neighbor, Woody Dearks, and he was in favor of it, he has no issues.
That's part of the record, obviously.
He used to be on the planning board?
Yeah, yeah.
Would members have any questions, concerns?
I think planning had some concerns about the amount of trees coming down, or something.
Yeah, so maybe you can mark out, we'll get an idea when it's staked, how many trees, if you can maybe mark which trees have to come out in order to get this in.
Sure.
Just tie something around it, so we have an idea.
How many are coming down?
I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, like, no, no.
I mean, we have a lot of trees.
It's, the only reason we ask is that, you have, you said you were.
The trees are all barely closed, all the trees that have come down, actually, I would want to take down anyway, because they're close to the house, and that's the reason our house got renovated in two thousand and sixteen, I think, or whatever it was, by the prior owners, because a tree fell on the house, so they had to renovate it, so, actually, all the trees that we would take down, I would like to take down any.
Have they did, the wise, combination there was?
Combination.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
We'll be able to see them, so as long as you mark the ones you were taking down, that'll be helpful, of course.
Actually, it might be a benefit for the applicant, so the planning board, we prefer the area barriers after the planning board can ask for their responses, they did have some concerns, they, according to the planning board, their concern was that it wouldn't be usable from Mill Road, and they had raised some issues about the trees, I did provide a copy of you for the resolution, for the response, just so you can see if you want to be able to.
I think that would be helpful, so he knows what the concerns are from the planning board, but again, getting out onto the site will be able to get a pretty good idea.
Yeah, we've had you guys draw a hot hug, so, for free, for that one time.
Probably Saturday, probably in a couple of weeks, if you like, you won't hold on.
Sound good?
Great. Anything?
No.
No? All right, I mean, yeah, I'll ask again, I do what I'm told, anyway, I did this, I might make a motion to close the public hearing, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so, again, what that means is we have sixty-two days from today to render a resolution, but we do it typically the next week, so on March twentieth, we will have the meeting, in the meantime, we will come and visit you.
Yeah, my wife's been in close contact with Gretchen, so.
Yeah, and Gretchen's great, so any questions, get to her, so.
Good.
All right, so we'll see you soon, in a couple of weeks, probably.
Thank you.
So I know that, you know, you will be doing a site visit, do you guys have any initial thoughts?
I have no qualms, I have a feeling it's, we'll see, we'll go and do the site visit, but, you know, from everything I've seen so far, it looks like it's gonna be shielded from, you know, the outside, it makes sense.
Especially that letter from Woody, I mean, that's a nice thing.
Yeah. That's my initial take. All right.
Thank you.
Sean Demont. Ah, good evening.
Good evening. Good. Wow.
Good evening, members of the board, Mike Herricourt, Ed Herricourt, General Contract and representing Sean Demont for proposed, making the existing garage into a poolhouse, one-bedroom poolhouse, with a small ten-by-thirteen addition, for sanitary usage, or bathroom, changing space, and Mr. Reminski is not here with us tonight, but the Septic is designed, we had to submit after pre-conference of the planning board, a revision to the print, was their concern, as it was identified as a workshop, potential down the road could be that somebody, not these owners, could make it into a second bedroom, so we've eliminated that issue on the pool print, all that.
Yeah, I don't know, I might.
It was on the same one.
Yeah, I don't think I.
Got all the things?
I got it today, but then I didn't do a test to put it online.
Okay. But anyway, the design is that we actually eliminated that, so there's no internal access to that workshop space, you have to go around to the.
I just think if I did it, but I didn't, sorry, I came in late, so, I was looking to see if you had a.
Can you bring that one back up your head?
Yeah.
Let me see, it's over here.
I think this is working, a little bit.
Do you have any other versions of this upon the screen?
That's what I have, I pull up your application, you can just let me know if I have it. Mostly photos.
Okay, the old street side photos?
Oh, the ones that you just submitted?
Ones we did for, yeah.
Recently?
Yeah. I don't know when Gretchen did it. Yeah, so this rear space here, with the overhead door, there's a dividing wall here with a door inside, so that's where we made the change from the planning board, at their recommendation or their concern, so that this space from this roofline back is only accessible from this overhead door here, so that there's no chance of anybody being able to, down the road, make it a second bedroom. And physically, the Septic system can be designed for us too, anyway, but explore every which direction for that, not physically possible, because, so, do you have a survey on that? A chance?
Yeah.
It's like.
This might not be a real thing.
Okay. So I have, I can roll that out, but I have the Septic stuff, or you want to, Board Health stuff?
I don't think we need Board of Health, but.
Okay, so the new Septic, this was the pool that we were before the board last year with, that is installed already, the fencing will be up here, the proposal in this is to move the shed that's here, down to the back of the property, this way to get that back from the road front, because I remember last year with the pool, when we did it, that was a question that was directed to us by the board of, is it possible to see that disappear from in front of a house proper? So they definitely accommodated that under this application process, they're more than willing to do that, and the Septic Mark has is down in here, in this section actually, about there, and then he has expansion out this way, and in conjunction with that, there will be construction access road in here, but he's working with, just counting with.
And as I recollect, you weren't sure whether that was a permanent or just.
Right now, we're only gonna do it as a construction road, and that's, I believe it's a trip, or something like that, I believe this is.
As I recollect from being out there, I think Catherine and I were out there last year, there's a pretty substantial rock out the property in front, so.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's offered from the road.
Yeah.
Other than that, do you have any other questions, or, try to do my best answer.
Is there anybody here for Sean Demont? Would members have any questions, concerns? Okay, all right, then I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and Mike, you've been to this before, so, sixty-two days, we'll probably do it in thirty, and I think maybe, or newer board members may go out to take a look at the property, since Catherine might have seen it before.
Yeah.
We'll get the books out there, probably, it's probably, not this Saturday, but this Saturday, yeah.
Wrong.
All right, can we talk to you?
Yeah.
Okay, absolutely, yes, they sometimes, yeah, as I say, they're traveling a little bit right now, but it's like overall, they're around, well, weekends are basically, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Does the board have any initial thoughts before the site visit?
I responded to it last year, especially in the property, I've been out there, so it's Catherine, you're not gonna see it, you know, but it's just. And I think we had photographs, actually, showing that in the last application, it's probably one of the projects out here, but it's in an existing file, but if you go out there, you'll be able to see it, and it's nice that they're moving that shed back too, so, I think that's probably the only thing you're gonna be able to see from the window. All right, next is Dave's Tree Service, come on up. How are you?
Good, very good. Name's Dave Hughes, I'm the owner of Dave's Tree Service, and I'm just asking for a variance for my sign to get closer from twenty feet to seven feet, so thirteen foot. The sign itself is already approved for the twenty-foot SEPAP, but just the sign is, by regulation, is so small, I'm just looking to get my sign a little closer to it.
Yeah, I know you've given us, well.
Mark's given us. Yes.
The, what the sign's gonna look like, so maybe we could put that up for, just to show the public what the sign's gonna look at, if I would be. No, see, we never usually do this, so that's why I'm not used to it.
Oh, I was just, I was gonna remind you, don't worry.
Yeah, I'd have to write it down, because for years I've never done it, so, now we're gonna have a new procedure, so I'm gonna do it. I make a motion that we open the public hearing, all in favor?
You have a second.
Anyway, so, sorry about that.
That, that's pretty much, unless you have questions, or does the sign is already approved, it's within regulation, everybody seemed to like it, I'm just looking to move it closer to the roadway, so you can see it, it doesn't affect DOT traffic at all, it doesn't affect the roadway, you know, site distance.
Anybody here for the Dave's Tree Service sign application?
We have a letter from Highway to Park.
Yeah, did you see that?
I just saw an email, is there a letter?
Yeah, I think from Mark, but talking about the response they got.
So you're just, sorry, we have to hear you, Catherine, no, you don't have to take your mask off, just speaking to the microphone.
I thought Mark had sent forward something that they've gotten a response from Highway to Park.
I don't know if they got a response, Mark's email today, so I had a call with Mark today, and I asked him if he had reached out to DOT, even though it's not in the right of way, the planning board raised a concern if DOT had any issues with the proximity to the right of way, they just wanted to just avoid any possible issues with it, Mark said he would call, I got an email later today, which basically said it's not in the right of way, I don't know if that's Mark's statement, or if it's from DOT, it wasn't really clear, I think, my guess is, and I could be wrong, I think that was just Mark's rationale, that it's not gonna be an issue.
And I think there's also the issue about the billboards.
Yes, so I know you have these billboards on your property, are you current, what's your current lease on them?
I'm in the, I know the planning board's not a fan of those, and I told them that I would consider taking those down, at the time, when I was buying the property, we were doing a few buildings, they said, well, we don't see a problem here if those billboards went down, but unfortunately, they had the first right of refusal to the property, so if I went and advertised that, they would want the property out, and I would have had my building, so, we let it go, lease got renewed by the time they gave me my building, so now, I think I'm two years into like a four-year lease roughly, so again, I'll consider doing that, I'm not gonna say yes, I'm not gonna say no, to be honest with you, it's income which offsets my taxes, I know the planning board has an issue with it, but I, I mean, the sign is beautiful, that's not a problem, I clean up the roadway, I do everything, I weed whack the whole thing, there's a huge, welcome to Ryan Beck, enormous wooden sign, that's four times bigger than the sign I'm asking for, which is closer to the road on my property, I don't have a problem with that, we painted this year, it may look nice, I'm just looking to get my sign looked up, I'm not saying no to the billboards, but, or yes, and I'll consider, I'm writing a little lease, so.
Understood, yeah, I think the planning board's comment was just, they just wanted to just reiterate that, you know, they're not a fan of the billboard, and just wanted to encourage you to consider voluntarily, and, and.
Are the billboards on the other side of the driveway?
Well, if you're looking at the driveway, they're on the right-hand side of the park. And one thing.
Every side of the driveway, those are the billboards.
Yeah.
And where's your sign going?
My sign would be right in the same spot, right now, with that twenty feet, it puts it back past the pole, and the size of my sign, you just won't even see it, I'm not, I'll put it up anyway, but you're not gonna be able to read anything, so I'm just trying to move it a little bit closer, so definitely does not interfere with DOT traffic at all, returning, none of that.
Another consideration is what are the signs in the area like, and where are they located, and they're located a lot closer to the roadway than the twenty feet.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking for anything out of the ordinary, that's not the norm for NIG.
Yeah.
There's a lot of variances, there's a lot of signs that are really close.
There's a lot of signs that are a lot, that are that close, and, and, in order to be safe.
Yes, sir.
You mean, you're not gonna park your trucks there?
No. Also, ties on my parents, we'll see what happens. No, I'm not likely to park, so.
Really? So are those signs up there now, those billboards?
Yeah.
They are?
Oh yeah, there's a whole history that, back in the fifties, they were encouraged, and they were.
Of course, they wanted the beautification.
Yes, the beautification of nineteen sixty-five.
Yes, so.
Yeah, I've seen them, changed them two or three times, and I don't, there are any changes, and I don't even see a truck, I don't know if they do it night or what, but it's a different picture, and it's not like it's a, it's pretty big, but, we're writing a little lease, so.
Yeah, I think the planning board realized that, I provided a little legal background on, so, because. Yeah, I think the planning board realized that. I, I provided a little legal background on, so because they are part, they're on a particular section of road that's under the authority of the New York State Beautification Act, and it's by these billboards. So Ryanbeck has a law, they don't allow the billboards, but these are actually preempted because they're under state law, so that's why, you know, we can't force you to remove them. So that's why the planning board just wanted to encourage you to consider removing them. But they, they do not, they, they were pretty sure that you were under a lease currently, so it's just a consideration.
Questions, concerns?
And the other thing, if you don't mind me, so the planning board also had provided response which stated that they, so when they approved the, the site plan back in twenty twenty-one, one of the conditions was that the sign, the sign was not approved when the site plan was approved in twenty twenty-one. It was a condition that it would be revised to meet the sign regulations. So their comment, I did reach out to Melanie Moore, the planning board chair, and Jim Levy of the Planning Board Places, who's the planning consultant, to provide, get a little bit more clarification on their response. So they had said that when you, when Dave's Tree Service applied for a sign permit initially back in twenty twenty-two, it was outside that, it was within the twenty, outside the twenty-foot requirement, which is why they stated in twenty twenty-two that they had no issues with it. And then I guess you ask for another sign permit to move it a little bit closer, as you had just explained. And so that's, I guess the planning board's view is that it doesn't meet the condition that it's in compliance with the sign regulations, which is why you're currently here for a variance. So anyway, just a little explanation as to what their response was indicating, that they were not in support of the variance because their condition in twenty twenty-one was not meet the sign regulations.
I never applied for a variance to move the sign closer. The problem was the square foot on the sign. And that was just me, never owning a shop in Ryanbeck before or anywhere else for that matter. I, they said twelve square feet, so I was thinking twelve square feet, but it's six square feet on each side. So we were on that meeting during COVID, the video, like, do you want your sign, and granted, now this, all of this is a pile of dirt at this point. You know, maybe I had no shop, right? Do you want your sign twelve square feet parallel with the road? Or, you know, or six square feet east side? So I'm like, I wasn't sure at that point. They said, well, we'll hold off on that, we'll get back and let us know which, which way you want. Because we had, we had done twelve square feet, you know, the way the sign is now, which is twice the legal limit, so we changed it to six foot. But I never applied for a variance to move it any closer. That was the whole.
Well, you're, you're in front of the board now for a variance.
Now?
Yes.
All right, I thought it was.
No, that's what I was, no, 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 no. I was saying that when you, when, so twenty twenty-two, you got your sign permit.
Yeah.
Initially.
Yes.
And then you changed the sign location to be closer to the road, to seven feet, just right now. That's what this current application is for. That's why you're getting a variance. So just the one variance. And not for the sign size, but for the location of it.
Okay.
So I just wanted to just touch, circle back to what we had discussed with the planning board's referral. Does that make sense? Is there?
No, it makes sense. The only, it doesn't make sense that you can't see it from there.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just wanted to just.
You know, maybe didn't know that, that by agreeing to put it back twenty feet or more from the roadway, you couldn't see it.
I couldn't, yeah.
And, and, and it's common in that area for people to be much closer to the roadway, so obviously seen.
Because it's a sign.
It's a sign. But you can know we're a business here, and that's why the law has to be changed. I'll say it again.
But that sign, it's not a directional sign, really. It's, it's more like a billboard that you're advertising your company, right? I mean, it's, you don't have.
I wouldn't say it's a billboard.
Yeah, billboard's a.
Well, I don't want to use it, but basically, right, but it's, it's not really a directional sign. I mean, you don't have people pulling in and out. You're not a retail shop.
I'm not a retail shop.
No.
I'm pulling in constantly, though, yeah. And they go by, they go back and forth, look for us, yeah.
Um, to, to pull in, to, I mean.
They, they'll, they'll pull in there, yeah. They'll pull in to find me or to ask for estimate or something. I mean, it's rare, it doesn't happen all day long.
Yeah.
But people, people look for a sign to see where Dave's Tree Services is for sure, so I would like it real, you know, so people can see me there.
Yeah.
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 Good business.
Good? Any other questions?
Good.
All right, I make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll have a decision, resolution in thirty days. We have sixty-two.
Okay.
But we'll have it by the next meeting.
Well, we might have one tonight.
Oh, no, not tonight, that's regular.
Depending on the board, so there was public hearing last month.
Yes.
We held it open to address the planning board's comments.
Okay.
So if the board would like to, we can address the planning board's comments. After the public hearings are done, we can either move forward with the resolution I have prepared, or we can have the sixty-two days, thirty days, whatever.
Well, we're going to consider tonight, I forgot that you actually did practice.
I'll just sit in the next door.
Thanks.
Wow.
Suspense. All right. Next, we have Wireless Edge. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. I was waiting for you to open the hearing.
Oh, that's right. I'm a slower. I'm a slower, I'm doing this for several hours. Make a motion that we open the public hearing? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Robert Baudioso, on behalf of Verizon Wireless and Wireless Edge, I'm joined by the President of Wireless Edge, John Arthur, who's here this evening. This is the public hearing. We did have a lengthy discussion about this last time, but give you a little bit of background.
Right, and let me just check, is there anybody here for this particular application? Okay, one, two, all right. So please give us the Cliff Notes version.
Sure. So it's a proposed wireless telecommunications facility at the Ruby's property. We originally had and still have an application pending before the planning board on the Chang property, which is up closer to Route ninety-nine, but also on Route nine G. Based on that evaluation that's been ongoing for quite some time, the planning board recommended that we relocate to the Ruby's property. And the reason for that was really twofold. One, the town board actually amended the code that a few years ago to make the Ruby's property in that zone a committed zone for this type of facility by special permit from the planning board, so they actually preferred this location. The second reason being, although it's lower in ground elevation, it's a much larger property. The facility can be set back much further from Route nine G, there's heavy stream on the property. We submitted a visual resource evaluation based on a crane test that we conducted out there last month. And when you look at the photographs, you can see the visibility is very minimal. Also, it does require a slightly higher tower, except we're able to now provide coverage in addition to where we were providing coverage, but also being able to pick up Route nine, which is very important.
Were there photographs of the, I know there was that crane test that.
Yeah, it looks like they were submitted.
So we did.
Okay, and maybe we can throw them up.
I don't have them.
I don't have.
I don't have electronic.
Okay.
It's pretty thick. We did those, we did do the photographs of, of the crane, but also we did some photo rendering showing the facility in a few places where it would be visible, would look like. So we've gone basically again on the planning board's recommendation with a very slim design monopole painted dark brown in order to help blend into the environment. The facility uses the existing access drive all the way up to the top until we extend the access drive a slight bit. All underground utilities, fence compound, meets all of the setbacks, it's all the setbacks of the property lines, it meets the setbacks to residential structures and all of the other requirements under the code. What it does have, it does have a height requirement, which is why we're seeking a height variance. When you read through the code, there's a lot of different provisions, but the underlying height limit is only thirty-five feet. Stealth structures are allowed up to seventy feet, and then other structures are allowed, if, you know, above that, ten feet above the surrounding tree level, within three hundred feet. That would still only bring us up to ninety feet. So when you read through the code, I think that really is the base, the base height that, that limits us to thirty-five feet. And we're proposing two hundred feet to be able to provide the necessary coverage. We submitted all the coverage maps, the engineering report, we went through that in some detail last time. It also is able to support co-location to avoid the proliferation of additional towers in the area. So we think that, you know, it did take a lot of extra time and effort and work with the planning board to relocate the proposal. But I think overall, given the, given the balance, that this, this alternative is certainly less intrusive than the original.
I did go out there for the crane test.
You did?
Yeah. You can't see it all from the road. It's way back behind where the Ruby's buildings are. I think it's a great location for it.
Yeah. We were.
And I'm sending you guys some photos, just a couple of photos. But what you can't see from the photos is how far back it is from the road. It's really a long ways back.
All right. Members of the public, I know there's two folks here who want to speak. You want to be heard? And please state your name, address, and all that kind of stuff in here. Questions, concerns?
We own the property next door, which is not a concern, but my concern is the, the height and if there's a light going to be required. Visibility at night, that type of thing.
It's a good question. We were originally concerned that it would require a light. We were able to minimize the height to two hundred feet. We checked with the FAA, there's no lighting required on the tower.
Second, second question, you're one, two, three, four, five, you have five A and ons down the road, is that what you're looking for there?
So the code requires we build it for co-location, which is what we did. There are essentially four carriers operating in the area. So you have Verizon Wireless, which is on top, and then the other three carriers that operate are AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Dish Wireless. We showed five just to be able to, also be able to support co-location of municipal service antennas for emergency services if necessary or desirable. So we, John, I should say, put the money into designing it to be able to avoid the proliferation of additional towers in the future.
Who's requires that, the Public Service Commissioners?
It's, it's in the code.
It's in your code.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have any, I'm sure you, it's probably, do you have any leases in the works already?
So we have Verizon Wireless, who's a co-applicant.
Right, and they'll be at the top, right?
They'll be at the top.
And you said who is the other?
So the other carriers that operate in the area, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Dish. We don't have leases as of yet, but the custom is once the tower's approved and and up they're running, they, they generally go co-locating. And you can see that around town at the other, the other towers.
Sorry, can, you can have as many as you like, that's what this is all about.
I'm assuming it's going to be similar to the tower that's down at the fairgrounds and what, who's the carriers on that one? Please.
Sure, so yes, it'll be similar design, except that it will be dark brown in color. I'm not exactly sure who's at the fairgrounds. I know that originally it was Nextel and now it's T-Mobile.
I thought it was Verizon.
And I, and I suspect Verizon's, I know Nextel was, I believe, the original carrier, who now is T-Mobile, and I know is extended recently. But that's the custom. I mean, they're all trying to provide coverage in the same areas. I think coverage for all the carriers is difficult in this area, obviously. So that's why we not only designed the tower, but also the compound is big enough, the telephone and electric that will be brought in is enough to be able to support all those carriers.
Kim, you can have as many questions as you like.
No, but it's, I think it's a great thing, I really do. My biggest concern was a light, walking out of my house and seeing a light flare from there. It's certainly needed in the area.
Do we have somebody else coming up?
I mean, I don't really have anything else that I'm worried to say, but.
Well, you never know.
Rachel Rouse. I do a lot of work just driving around the area, as I'm sure a lot of people do. It's extremely dangerous. It's been like that for twenty years. I would really like to see this get done through the community, who really, 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 really need cell service. You just can't complete a phone call in that area. And I just finished, like, I just sold a house in an area down near there. The people, one of the concerns with people buying the house was whether or not they could call emergency services. And it's, it's just, it's, it's a real problem, so I really think we can get this solved.
Thank you.
Scott, can I ask you something?
Come on in. You have to state your name and all that kind of stuff.
Scott Hutchins, nine G Properties, I'm the managing partner. Just an observation as it relates to safety in there. So this is office research park, hence it's designed for businesses to be co-located. We are required to put in fire, safety procedures and processes, et cetera, as well as the ability to call the fire department in the event of a fire. We're supposed to have two ways of doing this, one being, in our case, internet-based, the second being cellular. We don't have two. There is no cellular service. We can't make up a second one any other way. So there are businesses in this area, there's going to be more businesses in this area. Without the cell service provided, we cannot provide for the appropriate level of fire insurance that we're supposed to have. It's just an observation, but it's a fact we just, this, this past week in planning board requires.
Mike, there are four again. Very similar with Scott, just had to say, but it is definitely a factor for sheer safety aspect, as I say. I mean, construction, it's like you have an emergency in the dug, so many places around here, you can't make a call. Getting out of our area, down your true K, eighty-two is so bad, I mean, I can't wait, the state hasn't stepped at this point and really enforced to put more towers in, because it is a definite safety concern. I mean, free, even the law enforcement. They'll say, how do they call? We all rely on it so much anymore, that to me, the town should be welcoming more, at least honestly, to this site. But just hastily done, like, the, you know, Ruby's is looking to do with Wireless Edge. I mean, that's, to me, that's one of the best ones around for power availability to the area. They respect the area and the history of ours, so. Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Anybody else? Okay, board members, any questions? Appicate anymore?
I, I have a question. Well, well, is it possible that other things will be added to this down the road? There's a tower on Morton Road in this flag lot, it's been there for years and years and years, and now all of a sudden I notice that attached to it, like three quarters of the way up, it's like a, like a Volkswagen bug attached to it. I can see it. Will other things, is it possible that other things will be added to this tower down the line?
So what we've seen is, is basically this for the last two or three decades, where it's the antennas, they put small boxes behind the antennas, what we would call boxes, pieces of equipment. All the other equipment's at the base. The monopole design is nice because we're able to route the cables up to the inside of the pole. But it's basically either six or eight or twelve antennas on a platform or, or an arm, as we see on top, and then what we showed you, which is the, you know, the potential build out of the other, of the other users. But this will be, this will be served by landline, electric, and telephone, which will all be on the ground.
And it's not going to be any taller, so it'll be two hundred feet, there's nothing going to be above it, and you can't see it from the road.
I just want to just say, there is, with telecommunications act, there is the middle-class tactical leap act, which does allow towers to increase height, if it's not a substantial height. I don't have those figures off the top of my head. It's been a little while since I've worked with this, but I think it does, there, there, there is a possibility that it can be increased up to a certain percentage. I believe it's ten percent or ten feet. I, I could look into that, but just so you know, there is the chance it could always be higher. And it would be called an eligible facilities request, which doesn't require any local approvals.
Is there, did I see something come through recently with a planning board concern, or am I misremembering?
They, so the planning board, so this was on the planning board agenda last night for the first time, as Mr. Baudioso said, they've been in front with another project and they've just submitted this one as a simultaneous application. So the planning board provided a preliminary response. They would like to, they will be working most likely with some consultants, a visual analysis, George James, and an RF engineer, Don Gray. But what the planning board said was that they prefer this location to the. But what the planning board said was that they prefer this location to the Chang location, which was the first location on Main Road. They think it is more fitting with the ORB district, and it's more fitting for what the town had encouraged. So, at this point, they are in favor, or, well, I wouldn't say are in favor, but they are appreciative of this design and like it, but they think it's a more suitable location than the previous one, is what they have said.
I mean, when you, because of the way the land lies there, landscape, I think, actually goes up a bit before your tower, and then it drops down a little bit where your tower is, so. The pictures that I sent around to you guys, if it, if it looks like that crane is a little taller than the trees, the way the land is, you're still not going to be able to see it from the road. Because the road falls down the...
Delineated in all the plans, it's almost 800, I think it's 800 feet or 800 and change. It's significant, I mean. And we, you know, at the last location, we met the SEFA act, which was 250 feet, but it was open. This is just the opposite, it's over three times that, plus it's all heavily wooded, plus the way it snakes up there, it's tucked in, and then it's surrounded. You know, you really, you really can't get better.
Yeah, and so is the job.
Yeah.
So, at this stage, so the planning board also circulated for lead agency, for seeker. I had mentioned at the January meeting that this was likely going to happen, because they were going to be simultaneous applications. I would recommend that the ZBA allow the planning board to continue to be lead agency, in which case the planning board will be conducting the seeker review, taking the lead on it. ZBA can always provide comments to it as an involved agency. And, but the, the ZBA cannot act, they cannot make a final determination until seeker is done. So, I would recommend that the planning board remain, keep the public hearing open, just so that we'll elect the planning board to continue with this, with the seeker review.
Right, and that makes a lot of sense. But a question, can we, it sounds like we can, let the planning board know our initial feelings on this application, as part of their consideration?
Yeah, yep.
We appreciate that.
I think we should do that.
Yeah, we'll be, I'll be in touch with the planning board anyway, and probably, usually when we have simultaneous applications, as the seeker review kind of winds down a little bit, the planning board will look to the ZBA to kind of straw vote as to where they are on the variance request, just to know kind of where it's going, so that might be a good place to do it.
I think we can tell them.
Yeah, I know that the planning board did suggest that the ZBA consider some consultants, as I said, we do have, they will likely, I don't think they've made any decisions yet with, I'm sure the Ruby's side at least, but George James, they probably will be moving vote with George James, the visual analysis, and Ron Gray as the RF. So, I don't know if the board wants to do, wants to, we can always talk with the planning board as to who's going to conduct what, I'm sorry.
It's a negotiation.
I personally, after going out there, I feel like, let them do their thing, but there's no need for us to kind of require additional stuff.
No, not at all. I think we're, and they're sitting here right now, we're in favor. I'm not 100%.
Yeah, my question is...
It seems needlessly prolonging a long...
One thing I would ask is, you know, you spoke about Mr. Gray, and I appreciate he's going to do his things, an engineer do his things, and he's down in Florida somewhere, but if you could at least pass a wall, you know, that the public comment, I think, is, you know, obvious. The public comment is that there's a need, everyone knows there's a need, and the engineer down in Florida, who might not know the area, might be looking at maps and thinking that there's a certain opposition, but if you could at least illuminate the planning board on the public comment tonight, and feeling that I think is quite obvious, I think that would be helpful to the process.
And I would like to do that, I would urge that we do that. Or tell them to watch Steve's fine program here, they'll get the idea.
Thank you.
Do you get any sense of how the process is going to change?
I don't know that at the moment. Just, I haven't, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't really know what the seeker, I don't know where, well, I know that they're not, they haven't done the secret.
The public hearing's next month, and hopefully, we can move towards a negative deflation, which then, as counsel correctly notes, then you would be in the position to be able to vote on the variance, and then they'd be in the position to move forward with the special permit and second plan of approval.
So, at this time, I move that we continue the public hearing until March 20th, in order to give the zoning, excuse me, the planning board the opportunity to do the sort of secret review. I also, I don't know, partly part of motion, but I urge that we make our two cents to the planning board about how we feel about this project.
Sure. I can draft up a, I can draft up a little email, or we can work with Gretchen on putting a letter together, I'll circulate that so that you guys can get a look at it and make sure it...
To include the public comment.
And include the public comment.
Sure, okay, I'll work on that, and then I'll circulate it to you, make sure you can judge who what you discussed, and then I can forward that all on to the planning board.
So, but the motion on the table is that we continue the public hearing until March 20th, if I have a second.
Thanks.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye, aye. Thank you for your considerations, and I appreciate it for the folks that came out to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Thank you. Is, is Brian Williams here?
Who?
Brian Williams, he's on. Remember, we need to get those to speak.
Yes, yes.
And I don't, I don't think he's here, so. Kimmy, how do you want to take the, that does it, by the way, for our public hearings? Now, we have old business, and we have three, well, two resolutions, and potentially a third resolution. Anyone want to do that?
So, I see Mr. Chris Akritta here.
Okay. Okay, so we'll do this.
And then, I mean, Dave's here, and I think, so why don't we...
So, we'll do Mr. Chris Akritta?
Mr. Chris Akritta first.
Okay, and then we'll do Dave's.
So, so for Mr. Chris Akritta, I had, so based on the discussions last month, I had drafted a proposed resolution, and, and I have copies available over on the table if anybody's interested. I have circulated to the board. Did everyone get a chance to review it? I got Catherine's emails, edits, which were good catches. Everybody else get a chance to read it and review it?
Yes. So, do you want to just read, I guess, what we're going to do is just, because it's getting a little late, we'll just do the action items. So, Kim, is that okay?
Yep.
So, I could start with the...
Now, therefore.
Okay.
Is that okay? Or just want to read the whole thing?
No, 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 I think this is a good plan. "Now, therefore, be it resolved based on all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZBA hereby grants the area variances requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The porch fits in with the residential character of the surrounding area and is similarly designed to the existing studio on the property. Section two, the granting of these variances is expressly contingent upon the following: The proposed structure must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted. Section three, the granting of these variances shall also be express to contingent upon applicant's full commitment to the town of Reinbeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application in full compliance with Article 14, Fee Reimbursement of the Town of Reinbeck zoning law. These variances shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid and sold by the applicant. Section four, the granting of these variances does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. Section five, the area variances shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution." And as Scott said, all of the reasoning is available online, and there's copies.
There's copies up there, yeah.
Yeah, they're not online yet, but there's copies.
Discussion? I thought it was pretty easy, we did a site visit. Was it all of us?
Oh, yes, that's one thing. I have, so Joe...
Joe has some photographs that he's...
Yeah.
Oh, I have some too.
Yeah, so just include them for the record, but Joe mentioned, Richard, were you on the site? Did you do a site visit?
I don't, I don't think they came to this one.
Okay, I didn't include you. I have Joe, Catherine, Scott, and Brian did the site visit, so it's on Joe's...
I think that was a website, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I had no, I think it's the right decision, it's very nice, and I have no quarrel with it. I don't know about the rest of the...
No, absolutely agree.
Do you want to do the roll call?
I need a motion.
Oh, I, motion?
A motion to approve the resolution. That is good.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. In favor, Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Joe is absent, and Brian?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, shall we do Dave's?
Yes, good Dave's. So, I do have just a few, so because it was a...
Yeah, paragraph 89.
I'm sorry, Scott.
Yeah, paragraph 89, I think.
Yeah, so, so similarly, I drafted up a resolution based on the discussions we had at the last meeting.
This is Dave's? Yes.
I left a few spaces open, I left a space open in case there was any additional public comments, which I don't believe there was. Right? No public comments?
No.
And then, let's see, so, so I'll add at, that, so I'll just add on February 21st, 2024, no additional public comments were received. And then, and we'll say here that the public hearing was closed on February 21st, 2024. Did anybody do a site visit for this one?
Just drive by.
That's what I, that's usually how we kind of do the signs, that's the number of the comments.
Yep.
So, I have here that you had pretty much just, were around the property and signage, and were making individual visits, I drive inside. And I guess we kind of addressed a little bit about the planning board's concerns, so I didn't know if you wanted to add anything regarding their concerns that it isn't in compliance with the zoning law versus the request for a variance.
I think Dave brought it up, so, to be polite, I think we have to, you know, say that we saw the, saw the concerns of the planning board and considered them, but upon a full review of the matter, felt that the sign should be placed closer to the roadway so that it would have the face of efficacy, so that you can see. Again, we want to placate them, because I think they're a little annoying, that's the tone I got from before, but in order for the site action to work, it has to be, you know, closer to the roadway, maybe make a reference to the fact, I did read the body of this, that the fact that every single sign in the area is...
Yes, I included it.
Okay, yeah, so it's, it's...
90%? Is that the number?
Something like 90%.
Yeah, I think the sign inventory from Mark was a long nine in IG, there's 29 signs that they hadn't counted, and 28 of them are closer than...
Yeah.
So, let me just...
It was Mark who did all those pictures, right?
Well, he did it for Ruby's. He's doubled it, and he did it for Ruby, didn't he?
It's great to see.
Yeah, well, no, it was wonderful.
It's not costing some dead ones, like...
You know, we all, we all knew it, because we, we go up and down the roadway, but for him, to make a catalog of the signs and where they are and how close they are, it's great. The size, exactly. Yeah, that's, that's something that's very useful for us to have in the...
Picture, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, maybe there's some way that Gretchen can, you know, utilize that information so that we have it for the future, because it's not going to be the last time we're going to have a sign issue over this quarter.
It's not.
No, it's not. Yeah, it would be amazing. Yeah, it's good work. Yep.
So, I have here that says, "While we understand the planning board's concerns that the proposed sign does not meet sign regulations, we also recognize that many signs in the area are closer, are located closer to the road than what is required. These roads, particularly this section of Route 9G, are highly traveled areas with cars traveling 55 miles per hour. Upon full review of the matter, the proposed sign distance will help improve visibility for any passing customers. The sign is of a conforming size, only 12 square feet in area, thus having a closer will allow the sign to be visible without increasing its dimension of the sign area." Thus, the signs must be of a certain size of... Let me zoom it up a little bit. So... So, these roads, particularly this section of Route 9G, are highly traveled areas with cars traveling 55 miles per hour. Thus, the signs must be a certain size and certain distance to adequately inform drivers where a business is located and where a driver needs to turn. Upon full review of the matter, the proposed sign distance will help to improve visibility for any passing customer. The sign is of, the sign is of a conforming size, only 12 square feet in area, thus having a closer will allow the sign to be visible without increasing its dimension of the sign area."
I think that takes care of that.
Yeah, because I think it was also helpful for Dave to explain that the concern at 2021 was more about the size of it, which does comport with what the 2021 West Resolution said, which was, when they quoted the, that particular sign regulation, that was more about the dimensions of the sign, not so much the location of it. So, it's kind of a bit of a trade-off, that the sign is smaller, but in turn, it's a little closer to the road to help visibility.
And in all honesty, there may not have been a realization back then that, you know, being 20 somewhat feet or more back prevents it from actually having utility. And Lady discovered that, and that's why it's the back.
So, aside from this section, did you all get a chance to read the other, the draft that I had proposed originally?
Yeah.
So, then, do you want to read this?
Would you like me to do it, or?
Yeah, do you want to read it from the, down there's words?
Sure.
Oh, sorry, one word. So, we had kind of discussed a little bit, I have a section here, the removal of the billboards. So, right now, what I have here is that, in its referral response to the ZBA, the planning board recommended that the ZBA request that the applicant consider removal of the existing billboards on the property when their lease expires. The existing billboards are outside of the ZBA's jurisdiction, not subject to this application. Did you want to add anything in addition to that?
I think that's correct.
And would you just leave it at that?
Yeah, and I don't think it was discussed, but it's outside of our bandwidth, and it's just not something...
I just like billboards personally, but it's not our problem.
Right. Yeah, we have our focus.
So, I just added a sentence saying, "ZBA did discuss with the applicant deposita with the voluntary removing the billboards upon the lease's, lease expirations. However, existing billboards outside of the ZBA's jurisdiction not subject to application."
I think that's fair.
Okay.
All right. "There now, therefore be resolved based upon all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZBA hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant..." finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The request to have the proposed sign located 13 feet from the property line is not a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. As many signs have been found to be located closer to the property line along Route 9 and 9G, the sign should be visible for the business along Route 9G, and this provides a suitable location to achieve visibility along Route 9G. Section two, the granting of this variance is expressly contingent that the sign must be constructed in conformity with the application of plans submitted. Three, the granting of this variance shall be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the town of Rhinebeck, of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application in full compliance with Article 14 Fee Reimbursement of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. This variance shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. Four, the granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. Five, the area variance shall be null and void unless proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution. Any comments?
Just to change, I think I, so the sign is supposed to be 7 feet at my house.
Seventy, you're right.
The variance is 13. So I'll just make that change. I'll double check to make sure I didn't make any.
Seventeen. Any discussion? Okay. And I make a motion that we adopt the resolution as read with the one correction.
And, well, with the several corrections that we were discussing.
Right.
Well, you know, adding the sentence in about the removal of the billboards, and about the, discussing the planning board concerns about.
Right, and then the change in the distance.
Yes.
Okay. So I make a motion that we adopt this resolution subject to the changes that have been discussed. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Who was that, Catherine?
Now you got to do the roll call.
Roll call. All right, Scott Bergen?
Yes.
Catherine Clark?
Yes.
Richard Kopetsensky?
Yes.
Joe is absent, and Brian?
Yes.
Matthew Brown.
Yeah, she said. All right, and the last one is Briso. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
So similar to the other application for Briso, I took the board's directions. I drafted a resolution in the affirmative, and I circulated that to the board. Did everyone get a chance to look over that and read it?
Well, good.
And then, so this was Joe's, but Scott, did you want to just?
Sure, I'm on a roll. Now therefore be resolved based upon all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZBA hereby grants the variance as requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The resident, excuse me, the residential addition and carport to the existing old barn on the property will not be visible from Route 9G. The addition and carport are the same design material as the existing structure and will fit with the surrounding residential area. Section two, the granting of the variance shall be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the town of Rhinebeck, of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application and in full compliance with Article 14 Fee Reimbursement of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. This variance shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid by the applicant. Section three, the granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any and other required permits and/or approvals. The proposed residential addition and carport must be constructed in conformity with the application of plans submitted. And five, the area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of the resolution. Any comments, concerns, or discussions about the resolution? I thought it was a pretty easy one.
No way.
Oh, you're very kind. But, no, we went out there and it didn't seem to make sense. It was fine, setback, and it's fine. That was my opinion, and the rest of the game, thanks.
There's a lot of vegetation between the building and 9G. And he's planning to put in wood screening, which is desirable for him, so.
Yeah, and there's almost a quaysay vermin. I mean, I know there's a vermin on the property to the south, I believe, but I think he's going to do that. And yet, it's in his certainly best interest to keep the noise from the roadway at bay. So I think he's going to be doing that and putting up stuffs. But, yeah, it makes sense, so. All right, well, then I make a motion that we adopt the resolution as read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in, oh.
Yeah, who would like it? Well, who would like the second? Just like, put that for Gretchen, Richard?
I'll make it.
Richard.
Okay. All right, Scott Bergen?
Yes.
Catherine Clark?
Yes.
Richard Kopetsensky?
Yes.
Brian Hamblin?
Yes.
And Joe.
All right, and that's it for our agenda. Is there anything else for you to discuss or go over? Excellent. We'll move things along.
Thank you.
All right, so motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.